I'll order the August ninth, 2016 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, and we will start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Euler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. Now our meeting procedures will be recited by our clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, August ninth, 2016. Agendas are available on the table at the side of the meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note that the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record, and be aware there's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Next, we'll take up our consent agenda. This is a list of items all intended to be considered under one motion, but the board is happy to pull any if someone would like them discussed independently, or if one of my colleagues prefers that. Is there a motion?
To approve.
It's moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wagan?
Yes. Now is the time for public comment. This is the time when anyone can address the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind we can take no action. So if you have something you'd like to approach the board with, please state your name for the record. And it looks like there's no one in Tahoe. Okay. We will move on then to board member reports. Are there any board members who have something to report today?
I have none, sure.
All right. We will take up our first item, which is Department Public Works and Facilities Energy Saving Presentation on County Savings Measures.
My name is Steve Newsom. I'm the Deputy Director of Capital Facilities with the county. And I came on board here in March. So I've been an employee for the past five months. I've been very fortunate to work with some of our very visible projects that we're currently undertaking. But I've also been involved in some things that are not so visible, but are equally important in supporting the county's mission. And so I thought it would be a good idea to inform the board and the public on some of the behind-the-scenes things that we are doing to benefit the county and our taxpayers. I also have with me James Doolittle, who's an energy consultant to the county, and he's been very instrumental in some of the success that I'll be showing you here in this short The county, like any one of us, is a utility payer. We, you know, pay for our energy just like anyone else. And over the years, we've implemented a number of measures in order to help reduce our energy costs and be as mindful of the taxpayers' investment as possible. This is a bar graph showing a number of rates that the county pays. You don't pay the same rate for electricity for every one of your buildings. It may be more to our advantage to work with PG&E in order to get a more advantageous rate, depending on the type of facility and how the energy and when the energy is used by that facility. But what this graph shows is the increase in all of these different rates over the past eight years. So on the far right, you'll see that the average of those has increased 40% over the past eight years. You'll also notice the graph just to the left of that one, the E-19 Time of Use bar graph, which has increased about 40%. And I'll show you something along those lines in just a moment. Our peak demand rates, which relates back to that E-19 rate, have increased by about 65% over the past eight years. These are significant cost increases in energy. And you can see the -- excuse me. You can see the rise in costs over that period of time. So what we've done over the past eight years is a number of things incrementally in order to kind of vet out what we can do to reduce our energy costs and also to continue to maintain the comfort level in all of our facilities. In 2007, we participated in the California Energy Commission's Energy Partnership Program. This is where the California Energy Commission assists in assessing our facilities and giving some very cost-effective recommendations for improvements that can be made in order to reduce energy consumption. 2008, energy efficiency assessment of the Auburn Jail, the domes and annex, and the historic courthouse and fleet garage were done. 2009, then, we implemented some of the recommendations for energy retrofits at the domes and annex. 2010, the county received $600,000 for energy efficiency projects through that program. And also in 2010, the county initiated a building performance tracking, benchmarking, demand reduction strategies, and retrocommissioning of our larger facilities. Benchmarking is really the first thing that you need to do. You need to see where you are in your energy consumption. And this is one of the earlier things that we did in order to understand how and how much energy is used in our different facilities. 2012, we completed energy efficiency projects at 20 buildings throughout the county. And these projects are projects that are scrutinized and selected based on their return on investment. We want to get a very rapid return on investment, a matter of a few years, that would pay back for that money that's put into that. And then the savings beyond there, of course, is, you know, money in the bank. Retrocommissioning study of the Finance Admin Building and the Auburn Justice Center was performed in 2013, and it identified some very significant energy reduction measures that could be done. Retrocommissioning is basically a process of going to an existing building and analyzing and verifying that everything is performing the way it was originally designed. If it's not, and a problem exists, then, you know, we attack the problem to see where the issues are in order to get the systems to run as designed, as efficiently as possible. 2014, the community, this building actually, received an Energy Star rating, which is quite an accomplishment. That's a federal designation for energy consumption. And it's basically for this building, you know, its age to receive that in 2014 is quite an accomplishment. Also in 2014, Building B out at the Santucci Justice Center received an Energy Star rating as well. And then just last year, the Auburn Historic Courthouse Peak Demand Project began. And the Peak Demand is basically a program where during the summer, the hottest time of the day, everyone has their air conditioners on, so that the strain on the electrical grid is tremendous. So PG&E says, hey, if you can reduce your energy costs during this high-demand time, we'll reward you, you know, with a lower cost of energy. And so we have implemented that. We've done it. You may have received some emails from me indicating that tomorrow's going to be a very hot day. We're going to implement our measures to cut back on our energy use when we can do that. And then James Doolittle records this, analyzes it, sees how we're doing, and basically, you know, notes the benefit that we have received, and also anything that we may do to do even better at that. So over the past eight years, what has that really meant to the county? So what's the bottom line? Well, with the significant rate increases of over 40%, our energy costs since 2008 have actually gone down $160,000 per year. So what we paid in 2008 was $160,000 more per year than what we pay now, even though the rates have gone up so dramatically. So then that begs the question, well, what if we had done nothing? What if we had just, you know, kept with the same equipment, the same controls, not really taken any measures in order to reduce our energy costs? Our energy costs would be today over $1 million more per year if we had done nothing. So this plays right back into the analysis of return on investment and some of the measures, the lighting, the controls, HVAC upgrades, and so forth, have, you know, significant and very clear savings and benefits to the county. So what's next? We're going to continue, of course, to focus on energy savings. And so here are some of the buildings that are identified here at the DeWitt campus that will be part of an energy audit that will save 600,000 kilowatt-hours and annually about $97,000 a year. And that's the Auburn Justice Center, the Juvenile Hall, and the Finance and Admin Building. Also, the latest new building here at the county is the Animal Shelter, which will open in just a couple of months. And this, not only is it going to be one of the nation's finest animal shelters, but also, I think, the measures, the design, the interaction with our own maintenance staff during design and during construction have really shown some benefits. And here's some of that. It's targeting a LEED Gold Designation. It's Leadership in Environmental and Energy Efficient Design, which is quite an accomplishment in the state of California, because as the code requirements, you know, are ratcheting up, in order to achieve a pretty high LEED designation, there's a significant amount of effort that goes into doing that. It will be 30% more efficient than what the code requires us to be. And we're also getting $60,000 in annual energy savings and an $80,000 check written to the county from PG&E for participating in their savings-by-design program. So a lot of focus on energy and resource management for this project. So that's something that I think we can be very proud of. Additionally, we're in the middle of our master planning process for the DeWitt Center. And Williamson Patton is the consultant that we've hired, and part of their team includes consultants and engineers and so forth that will incorporate sustainable, energy-efficient measures in the recommendations that the ultimate master plan will include. So basically, that gets back to my initial statement that what we're doing with energy savings is supporting the county's mission to provide responsive, efficient, and effective public services that promote health, safety, well-being, and prosperity for our citizens while protecting our environmental resources and preserving the rich heritage of our region. So that really concludes my presentation. It was brief, but I really wanted to show you all something that, you know, as long as we're cool and the lights are on, we're not always aware of what's going on in the background. So if you have any questions, James and I are happy to answer those.
Great. Jack, and then Kirk.
Yeah. Thank you. Very important information. I did have a question on your calculations. The 160 and then the 1 million, that's net of everything that we did, staff time, all of that. That's a net number. Is that correct?
The, well, the net number, it does not include our staff time. We didn't incorporate that. It's really, it's much more kind of a black and white. What would our energy, you know, our energy consumption, what was the rate being paid, you know, compared then to compared now?
Okay. And that's what I'm saying, is that that's the net number. You're saying it's not including the staff time?
Correct.
So this is the net piece?
Correct. Right. And a number of the projects are also projects that were a necessity. For instance, if aging equipment or equipment that's breaking, that needs to be replaced, we would analyze, okay, what's the proper replacement equipment? And how can we get the most efficient equipment to still function that replaces that aging equipment?
Thank you.
Kirk?
Yeah. Looking at your analysis, you started it in 2006, or 2007, I'm sorry. So unfortunately, what you're not capturing in here are, and if you go back to the aerial of our campus, you're going to see a rather substantial ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array just south of the Juvenile Justice Center.
Yes.
And then you're going to see photovoltaics on the HHS buildings up off of B Avenue. That's the fab building.
Yeah.
The HHS buildings have photovoltaics there.
Yes.
And none of your savings calculates in the effect of those photovoltaics, especially on that ground-mounted array. If memory serves, when we entered into the power purchase agreement, we bought in already at a discount over what we were currently paying. And of course, photovoltaics are primarily a hedge against peak power consumption at peak cost times. You're showing a chart that shows a 65% increase over eight years, or about 8% a year. And if I recall correctly, the PPA that we had was somewhere around a 2% to a 3% adjustment per year. So we have substantial savings over what we otherwise would have been charged had that array not gone in. So I'd be interested in seeing if we have any kind of calculations on the board's decision to move forward with photovoltaics, especially since the board was questioned in terms of making that decision. And one board member in particular was roundly criticized for having a conflict of interest, which was completely false, never substantiated. And I think the board made a very wise decision back then, and I think history would bear that out. So I'd like you guys, when you get a chance, to take a look at what we otherwise would have spent had we not moved forward with those PV projects back then.
Okay. Yeah. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think it's always great to understand what are the implications of the actions that we take as a county. And I think very clearly, these are really positive actions. Something that I would love to see come back, and obviously, it's at the pleasure of the board, but a similar analysis in terms of water usage. I know that we've taken some, you know, some fairly comprehensive steps to reduce our water use at Placer County, largely in response to the drought, but also just because we understand it's the right thing to do. And so if the board would be willing, I would be very interested in having a similar presentation on our water use.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that's from my work before coming to the county. I'm very aware that, in some cases, water costs can be half of an entire utility bill, which is significant, as well as it being a valuable resource. So yeah, happy to work on that.
Thank you.
Any objections by board members during that?
I didn't think there would be. So yeah, we'd look forward to that coming back to us.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is Hidden Falls Regional Park. First, we're going to hear an update on our interim parking solution. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Andy Fisher, Placer County Parks Division. Here's Hidden Falls Regional Park. This is our largest facility within the parks inventory that we have, 1,200 acres. And through your board's investment in both Hidden Falls and in the property to the north and to the east, along with the Placer Land Trust, we have an opportunity to expand Hidden Falls from its current 1,200 acres to almost 4,000 acres. 30 miles of trail today could become almost 60 miles of trail. The next item before you today is going to ask you to ratify a contract to begin the study of that expansion. But we thought, while we were talking about expansion, it really begged the question, what are we doing already to work with the heavy use and the sometimes overflow parking issues that we have at Hidden Falls today? So we wanted to give you an update on where we're at there before we look at expansion. My colleague Lisa Carnahan will be here to talk about that expansion in just a moment. Back in 2014, this is what the scene looked like. The combination of the drought and some poor ski seasons drove people to look for recreation further west out of the hills. We've also seen the increase in social media that advertises Hidden Falls, and with that came these kind of parking conditions. And so this is the scene in 2014. In response to this, we completed a parking expansion project that since this time, now there is about six to 12 additional spaces for equestrians. There is an overflow area that will handle about 25 additional cars, but as you can see, that doesn't take care of the entire problem. There's still more people wanting to use Hidden Falls than we can accommodate. So following this, your board enacted a no-parking ordinance along Mirs Drive and Mirs Place, which is about a third of a mile entry road, a public road coming into the park. But the effect on that was to push traffic, who was still eager to come to Hidden Falls, out onto Mount Vernon Road. This is a picture of Mirs Drive. So as people pushed out and could no longer park on Mirs Drive, they began parking along Mount Vernon and walking along Mirs Drive. So it began looking somewhat like Disneyland, walking down Mirs Drive. And this was the parking scene along Mount Vernon. Mount Vernon is an even more arterial road than Mirs, and unsafe. Our engineers determined for parking. And so in April 2013, your board enacted a larger no-parking zone. So where Mirs Place, about a third of a mile previously, had no parking, now one mile each side of Mirs Place, Mirs Drive is a no-parking zone. That included over 100 signs, no-parking signs out there. The feedback that we've gotten is positive. That has solved some of the parking problem. We have not seen a lot of violations of the no-parking area. We do have the ability and the contacts with CHP to up that enforcement if we see it become a problem. So far, so good. Along with this no-parking, we also have rangers that, within the park, we have a ranger station in the park during overflow, and they make sure that people are stacked in the overflow to maximize that amount of parking. We have rangers out front that hand folks some other opportunities, other places they can go if the parking lot is full, and help with that circulation. We also have placed changeable message boards a few miles either side of the park to help alleviate, maybe intercept, some folks before they get to the park. So that's what's happening right now. But in our next steps, we want to focus on what we can do to let people know what the parking situation is before they get there. So in response, we have updated our website. That was a little outdated. We now have current information. We now have a new Twitter feed that's up, and so people will be able to sign up for that. We're in the process of populating that with information and practicing how we're going to keep that updated and how to broadcast that so people can sign up, get up-to-the-date, up-to-the-moment information on what's going on at Hidden Falls. We also are in the process, the beginning processes, of updating our reservation system. So that'll be a several-month process, but when that is complete, we do expect, that'll give us the ability during peak times to close the park to all but those who have reservations. So we have that option. So the only people coming to the park would have to have a reservation, and therefore we could control the number coming in and try to avoid that overflow situation. We're also working with a consultant team and our communication staff here at the county to install webcams. So those would be a live feed. The people will be able to look online and see what the parking looks like at the moment, so they'd be able to make a decision whether they were going to come out to the park as well. I think that would also have some positive impact on illicit activity. A year ago, we had a rash of burglaries out there. That seems to have calmed down. Hopefully, our sheriff caught them. But we think that would also have a positive effect on that kind of a thing. And also be able to post messages. So for example, overflow conditions are not the only reason we close the park during rain events. We keep horses and bikes off of the trails for the stability of the trails for a couple days, and they'd be able to see that in real time online. Also, we're moving ahead with some changes to the entry. This would not control parking so much as it would make circulation easier. We're going to add some pavement and change the striping and reorient the way people come in and out so that they will not need to cross one another and cross traffic coming in and out. It will alleviate one blind corner for people coming in, and also during overflow situations, allow more stacking of cars and easier time for our rangers to turn people around. There are a few other ideas that we have looked at and at this point are not planning to pursue any further. Right now, that is a shuttle service. We looked into what that might cost. It appears that a shuttle service would cost upwards of $1,500 to $2,000 a day to keep somebody on retainer to do that. And it seems at least uncertain that we'd be able to recover much of that, and we don't know what the interest would be in that kind of ridership. So it's our intention to hold off on that right now. Also, the issue of pay-to-park has come up, and we do not want to pursue a standard pay-to-park, as in you would come up to the park, get a ticket, put it in the kiosk, or talk to a ranger and pay them directly. Now, with the reservation system, usually a fee to get a reservation comes with that electronically, just by virtue of the reservation service that we would employ. But just the standard come-to-the-park, pay-to-park, we're not planning on pursuing that at this point, based on feedback that we've had from the board. And so even with a reservation system during the most peak times, we hope to also have some other times that are still free parking there. So that's what we're doing with the existing parking situation. I'd like to turn it back to your board right now, and then Lisa Carnahan will be here in a moment to talk about expansion and also additional parking opportunities that'll come with that.
Thanks, Andy. Questions, comments by board members?
Andy?
Jennifer?
Thank you. That was very exciting. Thank you very much and to staff for all the work on this. This obviously was an issue that was really of great concern to local residents. I think the actions that we've taken so far have largely mitigated the problems that we saw out there, with the exception of the fact that it is still a much-loved park and a lot more people would like to use it than currently are able to because of parking. One of the things you didn't touch on that I mentioned this morning in Medlars, and there was really some kind of good feedback on that, was the cells, the issues with cell service out there. And, you know, one of the issues is that if you get there and your buddies are going to come join you and there's no parking, oftentimes you don't have enough cell service to even be able to call people to say, hey, don't drive out here, let's meet somewhere else. What are our thoughts on cells? I mean, forget parking, there's emergency response issues around that as well. But what are our thoughts on providing additional cell service? What might that look like?
We can, that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up, because it is in your staff report. We continue to beat the bushes with the companies like Verizon. At this point, they've told us there's not enough usership out there to make it worth their investment, but we do continue to try to put whatever pressure we can. We do have enough cell service with an antenna to get that live feed, not in video form, but in rapid, once-a-minute still shots, at least. We have that much bandwidth. We'll continue to look at opportunities. We do have a hard-wired landline, so there is an emergency phone out there for folks. And for that was, for that reason, we knew we had bad cell coverage, so we put a landline in, but we're continuing to beat the bushes on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from board members? See none. One thing I'd like, Andy probably goes without saying, but if you could just plan on giving us feedback, some kind of an interim basis as to how things are emerging. I expect the demand for the park is going to continue to increase. So when we first opened, we didn't have a demand that caused the problems that we've recently been having to address. But of course, you know, we did have to put up no-parking signs, and I'm assuming that in the future, until we catch up with more supply, we're going to see more pressure to do additional things. So if you could just plan on some kind of interim feedback to the board, I think would be useful for us.
We would be pleased to do so, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? See none. We'll take up item B, which, excuse me, C, which is consideration of an agreement for Hidden Falls Regional Park Expansion Environmental Review. Lisa?
Good morning. I'm Lisa Carnahan, now with Parks, not with Planning anymore. Very happy to be here. Yes, and looking at the long-term solutions, we, there's several things that we've been looking at. And Supervisor Montgomery, to your point of continuing, looking on to additional service out there, I have been working with Dieter Wittemberg on looking at possibly boosting the signal out there to help things. So he is looking into that, to see if we can do that. So in the long term, we are looking at expanding, as Andy said, the possibility of a trail system that would add 30 miles of trails all the way up to the Bear River would be very exciting for all of the public. But we do want to make sure that prior to doing anything, any work on the ground, we want to make sure to do the environmental analysis that would be required for that. And so we'd be, Parks Division went out with But we do want to make sure that prior to doing anything, any work on the ground, we want to make sure to do the environmental analysis that would be required for that. And so we'd be, Parks Division went out with procurement, went out to 162 firms that were solicited. We got back a couple of very well-qualified firms. We did, we are recommending AECOM to you this morning. They will help us look at not only the existing parking problems and what to do there, but they'll be helping us look at where can we put additional parking? Are there any places for county-owned parcels to provide parking? Are there any potentials for individuals that live adjacent to the park to perhaps provide their own private parking lot with a lease to get right into the park via a gate? There's all sorts of possibilities. Of course, we'd be, at that time, we'd be looking at any traffic implications that might occur with those. So as you can tell, we want to make sure that before anything is, any expansion is open, that we have all of our ducks in a row, and we have looked at everything, and we want to make sure the public's involved. We're planning to have lots of community meetings, and I think this is, I'm very excited to be involved in this. So with that, we are recommending that your board, and we are requesting that you approve an agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated for the Hidden Falls Expansion Project for, in the amount of $233,622, and approve a budget revision in the amount of $250,000 to create a new capital project number with the Hidden Falls Expansion Review. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments by board members? See none. Yep. Jack?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the timetable to get all this done?
Timetable? We're looking at just over a year for the environmental review, and then it would have to come back to your board with any, you know, for approval. And we would need to be looking at revising the current use permit, so that would come along with it.
And I'm assuming AECOM has done park EIRs before?
I'm sorry?
AECOM has done park EIRs before?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? See none. What's the pleasure of the board? Keep in mind that we're going to have to do a budget revision, so we need a roll call vote.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Holmes?
Hi.
Duran?
Yes.
Euler?
Hi.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes. Thank you.
Next item is Sustainable Groundwater Management Plan, Marthis Valley Basin. Kevin?
Good morning, Chairman Wigan, members of your board. I'm Kevin Bell, the Environmental Engineering Program Manager with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. And I'm here this morning to provide your board with an update on sustainable groundwater management, or SIGMA, activities in both the Marthis Valley Basin and the North American Subbasin. I'll start with the Marthis Valley Basin. So the Marthis Valley Basin is located in the area from Truckee to North Star and is a medium priority basin under SIGMA. It is a sustainable basin with the current plan and ongoing monitoring in place. In addition, water extraction and usage in the basin is already limited through the Truckee River Operating Agreement, and the basin has demonstrated sustainability even through the most recent drought. The team working collaboratively on SIGMA compliance for the basin includes Placer County, Nevada County, Town of Truckee, Placer County Water Agency, North Star Community Services District, and Truckee-Donner Public Utility District, with PCWA facilitating the monthly meetings. In addition, stakeholder outreach will be performed later this year at MAX and other public meetings. SIGMA generally requires formation of groundwater sustainability agencies by July of 2017 and adoption of groundwater sustainability plans by 2022. Groundwater sustainability plans are anticipated to be very complex and costly based on the current regulations. However, there is an alternative plan option for basins, which is actually due January 1st of 2017, which allows a basin to demonstrate sustainability without preparing and implementing a groundwater sustainability plan. Since the Marthis Valley Basin is a relatively small, confined, straightforward basin that has been sustainable, the group is proposing to prepare and submit an alternative plan by the deadline of January 1st. There are a number of actions discussed in the staff report that would be required by your board in order to pursue the alternative plan, and staff will return to your board later this year with those items. If the alternative plan is approved ultimately by the Department of Water Resources, the group would save an estimated $1 million. The cost to the county in order to prepare that alternative plan is approximately $10,000. Our share of that is $10,000. At this point, the group is pursuing a memorandum of agreement for preparation and implementation of the alternative plan. And if the plan is rejected by Department of Water Resources, the group would still have six months to form a groundwater sustainability agency. And any information that's generated with the alternative plan would still be useful for the ultimate groundwater sustainability plan if we get to that point. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions your board has on this item.
Jack?
Well, thank you. That's very, very good information. But will we have access to administrative drafts of this plan that's going, you know, that's being prepared?
Yeah. We'll be coming back to the board later this year with drafts of a number of items. If, you know, we'll ultimately be coming for approval for the board, but we'll try to get drafts to the board in advance of those decision points.
Thank you.
Any other comments? And you don't need any action from us on this item, right?
This item is just an update.
Jim?
I actually do have one question. So there has been a fairly public discussion about the Squaw Valley PSD's hope to build a pipeline that would tap into the Marthis Valley aquifer and transport water, redundant water supply to Squaw Valley. Is that going to be analyzed as part of this information that's going to be presented January 1st?
It should be included. There should be some discussion of that. You know, in terms of the actual project, I think the project impacts are going to be evaluated as part of that project. But any future use and land use in this area needs to be incorporated.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public want to address the Marthis Basin discussion? Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Carry on with the North American Subbasin.
All right. So, yeah, the North American Subbasin is located in western Placer County and includes portions of Sutter County and Sacramento County and is a high priority basin under SIGMA. It is currently a sustainable basin and is being actively monitored and managed by various agencies, including the team that we are engaged with in western Placer County. And that team includes Placer County, City of Roseville, City of Lincoln, Placer County Water Agency, and the California American Water Company, with Placer County facilitating the monthly meetings. Staff and consultants are currently reaching out to stakeholders and developing an outreach plan which will be implemented later this year. Again, SIGMA requires formation of groundwater sustainability agencies by July of 2017 and adoption of groundwater sustainability plans by 2022. And while there is the alternative plan option, the plan would need to cover the entire basin, and the North American Subbasin is a much larger basin with significantly more complex and varied data of different intervals, and was determined to not be a good candidate for the alternative plan. Therefore, staff is proposing to work with the team to move forward with a groundwater sustainability agency formed through a memorandum of agreement by July 2017, with the option to transition to a different governance structure at a later date when more information has been developed that will better define what the role of that groundwater sustainability agency would be. In November, your board authorized staff to apply for a sustainable groundwater planning grant through the Department of Water Resources. Placer County was awarded a two-year grant in the amount of $242,016, which was available beginning last month. The grant will be used to review basin-wide land use planning information, develop groundwater sustainability agency structure options, and water extraction and quality data for groundwater sustainability plan development. The grant will cover both staff and consultant costs and comes with a 50% local match. However, staff was able to negotiate with the Department of Water Resources to count previously expended funds as the local match, and therefore, no additional funds are needed to meet the local match requirement. A request for proposals was developed with the Procurement Services Division for the work to be completed through the grant, and we received three proposals. An evaluation panel consisting of representatives from the Placer County Executive Office, Planning and Public Works Departments, as well as PCWA and the City of Roseville, selected GEI consultants as the most qualified firm. And we tentatively have a kickoff meeting to begin work scheduled for Thursday later this week. In order to proceed, staff recommends your board approve the award and execution of the contract in the amount of $201,896, and authorize the Department of Public Works and Facilities Director or designee to execute contract change orders, and finally approve a budget revision to create a capital project for the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act implementation in the amount of $250,000. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that your board has.
Questions from board members? Comments? I see none. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Okay. We are requested to approve the award and execution of the competitive bid that was discussed, and we also have to approve a budget revision in order to facilitate that.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Holmes?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay. The board has finished its public items, and we will now adjourn into closed session. Jerry?
The board is adjourned to closed session to discuss the closed session items listed on the agenda, which include a conference with legal counsel to discuss one item of anticipated litigation, a conference with real property negotiators to discuss two potential acquisitions, a conference with labor negotiators to discuss labor negotiations with the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and finally, the board will conduct an employee performance evaluation.
So we'll report out?
In a closed session with conference with legal counsel, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel on one matter of anticipated litigation. In a conference with real property negotiators, the board heard a report on two separate property transactions, Sheridan '83 investors and City of South Lake Tahoe, and gave direction to its real property negotiators. In a conference with labor negotiators, the board heard a report and gave direction to its labor negotiation team. And finally, the board conducted a public employee performance evaluation. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. And with that, the August 9th, 2016, Placer County Board of Supervisors.